And I am call, I'm sorry. Laser, Steve, are you guys ready? You got, please remind us of that when we come in. All right, it is now six thirty-six. I'm gonna call our meeting to order at this time. Welcome, everyone, everyone who's on this room and everyone who's watching us from our YouTube channel. Okay, the first thing up is our, our public hearing for the district-wide school safety plan. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing on the district-wide school safety plan?
I'm moved.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any discussion? Any opposed? Okay. The public hearing for our district-wide school safety plan is now open. We do have one community member that did register in advance. And I'm gonna let her in now. All right, they are connecting to audio. Hi Katie, can you hear us? Uh-oh, I can't, we can't hear you.
He can't hear you. Are you muted?
She unmuted. Yeah, so you can tell she's not muted, but we still can't hear. Um, Katie, maybe you might wanna um, log back out and then come back in. So I'm gonna put you back in the rating room, and I think that's where you would log out. And then just come back into us because we can't hear you. And you're, and you, and it doesn't show you on mute at all, but we can't hear you. Okay, no. Oh, um, Liza, I'm sorry, I can't put her there. Um, you have, um.
Oh, to the waiting room?
Yeah, I guess so she can unlock herself out and then try to log back in.
Okay, she's back.
Okay, thank you, Laser.
No problem.
All right, so we're gonna.
If that doesn't work, you try a phone.
Yep. And try to be patient. Okay. That didn't work, that was fine. Okay, let's see. All right, Katie. No, we still can't it. So the only other thing is unless you wanted to type in the chat or call.
Do, or do you have headphones, Katie, that you can try, fugging in?
Okay, so try your headphones.
One?
Oh, she only has one. Wait, all right. All right.
Hey, it's Tracy.
Yep, Tracy's there, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
We can, we can hear you.
Thanks, Laser, for the suggestion.
All right, Katie. We're ready.
Okay, um, I had some, I had some feedback about the district-wide emergency management plan. After looking it over, I think the board may want to, before you adopt it, the district should update some pertinent info. That was out of date. I saw like on page fifteen, there were under the emergency situations, locations, facilities, et cetera. The early childhood classes are not AM and PM anymore, their full day, and now this year, they're not in those locations. So things like that. Also, like the principal at Maria Regina is a different person than listed. And I don't know if you're gonna update the student counts and stuff. It says it's updated as of October twenty nineteen, so that's out of date. And otherwise, like, also page eleven, when there's a list like by school of different programs and things that are there to, to help prevent violence. I think under Woodlands, it says something about the website has a call-in number. And I went to the website, I'm looking for the call-in number, I don't see it, but I see now we have school messenger, like quick tip, anonymous tips, I found that on the website. So this document should match what's on the, what's on the website. And my thought is really if someone has a tip about violence, maybe this should be accessible like on the homepage. Because I might not, you know, know where to look, it's under the parents slash students, but I could be a community member who got a tip about something, so that's just a thought. And also, there's, yeah, a lot of programs listed about bullying, anti-bullying, and violence prevention, and I'm just wondering if you wanna consider, I'm, you may already have trained your staff and stuff, but about suicide prevention. And, you know, there's stuff in there about seeing the signs about violence and stuff, and I think we should remember that violence to oneself is an issue too, and it could happen unfortunately on campus, you know, God forbid, so anyway. And also, if you wanna consider like the most current SEL, social emotional learning programs you've put in place, I know there was like mentors, I don't know what's happening now with the hybrid program, but I know you've had mentoring program that you created last year, so things like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, um, Katie, we really appreciate it, I've taken the notes down, I'm pretty sure that, um, Dr. Reynolds will do so too, but we'll make sure that we get this feedback, we appreciate it. So this way we could make the changes that are necessary.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much. All right. Let's see. All right. All right.
Anthony.
All right, so did anybody else capture the notes that were there? I mean, I mean, the, the list of things that were there, I did write them down, I just wanna know if no one else did. I could send it to you, Dr. Reynolds, I believe.
Thank you very much, that would be appreciated.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
And I had some comments that I already sent in, I think, last week, you guys, you, you received them? Or at least I, you did, okay, good.
Yeah.
I just would like to make one correction to the board president, can you send me the notes? And I will distribute to the proper people in the district, following our protocol for communication. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, anyone else? All right. Hearing none. All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and extensions, okay, the motion carries, we are done with our open, excuse me, with our district-wide safety plan, um, hearing, public hearing. Okay, as far as what's next is statements from the public, we do not, or we did not get any sign-ups for our statements from the public today. Um, next up is our policy review. Okay, so for policy review, the first one up is thirteen thirty, appointments and designations by the board, so pretty much all that was is that we added new titles or updated titles. All right, does anybody have any like to add, any questions there? Okay, the next one up, sixteen forty absentee ballots. Um, we never, um, and Ivy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we never had um, the policy, so now it's being added for, um, like referendums, budgets, different things like that, the absentee ballot.
Correct, we never had a, a policy, it's not required, but everyone was recommending it.
Okay. Any questions or any thoughts on that? Okay, next one is fifty-six seventy, the records, um, management. Uh, let me see, so this one is an addition, I believe, from ED one schedule, renaming the ED one schedule. Any questions about that one? Okay, then we have fifty-six eighty-one, that's school safety plans. Um, and that one was to add a sentence. Um, we actually already updated it in October of twenty twenty. And so we needed to add an additional statement regarding public health emergency base. All right, are there any questions about that one or comments? Okay, so all four of these were reviewed by administration and also reviewed by our attorneys as well. Um, so this, please look for this at our next meeting. All right, so if there's no more questions on that one. Let's go back, next up, we have committee reports. Terry, your hand was up first.
Yes, this is not a committee report, I just wanna back up on something. Regarding the district-wide safety plan on the printed agenda, we have here that the be resolved that the Board of Education duly adopts the plan. Were we supposed to do that after that, or, cause I did see it on the board action, so I'm just curious. Unless I missed it on the board action.
Nope, it should be on there. I don't see it on there, but yes, we are supposed to, um.
As amended? Have you amended it?
Hold on. Cause I closed it already. We've been to close, we've been to, we've been to close. Yes, all right, um, so I closed it, well, I don't think I would be a, yes. Could you hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Well, perhaps we can do this, I mean, since there's some issues that were raised, some corrections that need to be made. Can we allow, can we put it on the next meeting agenda for adoption? I didn't know she had gone away.
My apologies, there was, a neighbor came to the door, okay, I'm sorry, Terry, what were you saying, the last thing you said?
I was saying that since there's some additions and some revisions that need to be made, perhaps we should put it on the next agenda, next meeting agenda for adoption.
Yes, Ivy, what does that do for timing? Are we still good to, to sort of, I guess, postpone it?
That's a question for administration, I don't know the, the timeline requirements for that.
Dr. Chase, thank you, Ivy.
Sure, we should put it off, put it off and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Well, the state, I will say, the state education department encouraged us to send it as is and to make the corrections afterwards. There is an urgency that they get some type of plan from us, and what they encouraged us to do was to make the corrections after it is submitted. But they need for it to be submitted, having been board approved, so I wanna make sure that that's clear to the full board.
Okay, so we could, so what you're saying is we could send it as is and then update them once we fin, once we make the corrections.
That is a directive that we received from NYSED.
All right, so.
The timeliness of it.
Thank you, Dr. Chase, so bored, I think that we should, um, well, how do you feel about it, I think that we should adopt it and do as is in regards to um, sending it as it is and then sending an update of the corrected document. Ashley, I see your hand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, as long as we can commit to modifying it by our next board meeting, which is February ninth. That way we just don't get too far out, but I'm good with that plan.
All right, um, David?
So then there's a resolution to adopt it as is this time, and then another resolution at the next meeting? Adopt the update?
I think the resolution is just gonna be what the resolution is prepared for as it is right now, and then we'll come back and we will amend it, well, we will accept the new one coming in. we will amend it. Well, we will accept the new one coming in.
Okay, so the answer is yes.
Yes. Yes. Dr. Chase?
So just for clarity, we will not post the one that we're sending to, if it is adopted this evening, we will not post it until it is corrected. So I know that one member mentioned the 9th. We're not going to post something that has erroneous information or information that needs to be amended. But, you know, for the purpose of satisfying the state requirement, and they recognize that most districts are sending them information that might be antiquated, or information that may not be fully accurate, and they have recognized it, they just need it for the purpose of, of their assurances. So, you know, we will make those changes before we actually post it for public consumption.
Okay, well, with Ashley's ask, is it, would it be possible to, to have it by the 9th with the corrections, Dr. Chase?
We can try. We, we can try, but we will definitely have it this month in February. I don't know what, there's so many uncertainties that happen in a school district these days. So I don't, I, I hate to put a date stamp, but we will definitely try our best to get it by the 9th. But if not, it will be before the, what do you call it? The, the, the upcoming break. We'll definitely have it before then for public consumption.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Chase. Okay.
Before winter break.
I'm sorry, David, say that again?
Before winter break.
Yes. All right. So we're going to go back to the public hearing. And we're going to adopt it as is. Okay, so be it resolved, excuse me, be it resolved that the Board of Education duly adopts the district-wide school, the district-wide school safety plan for the 2020-2021 year. A copy of which will, which shall be appended to the minutes of this meeting. Is there a motion to adopt our resolution?
I'm moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I think we already had discussions, so we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Terry, for that. Okay, so in the public, okay, back to committee reports. David, you said you had none, or you said you wanted to say something?
I have two.
Two. Go ahead, Dave.
One's short and one's long. Okay. The audit committee met on 1/25/21 at 5:00 PM via Zoom call. Attendees included Tanya Drojic, David Warner, Terry Williams, Lisa Raymond, Amy Ashley Moore, Laser Alert, Steve Lewis, and Chris Lozari, Augustin Lorente, Chris Moriarity, Michael Owens, Chris Fallon, and Eric Zinger. The meeting convened at 5:02 PM with audit committee members, liaisons, and technical support personnel in attendance. We entered a closed session to discuss the employment history of candidates for two non-BOE audit committee member openings for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. Thank you to Carol Allen, Cheryl Daniel, Chris Lozari, Augustin Lorente, Chris Moriarity, Michael Owens, Chris Fallon, and Eric Zinger for volunteering for these openings. Cheryl Daniel and Carol Allen withdrew from the process due to scheduling conflicts. Dr. Allen has been appointed to lead the Greenberg COVID vaccine angels. The remaining volunteers entered and left the closed session portion of the meeting as we interviewed them. At 7:48 PM, we came out into open session and unanimously passed a resolution recommending that the Board of Education appoint Michael K. Owens and Chris Lozari as audit committee members. That's item C1 on tonight's Board of Education agenda. The board has been given information provided by the candidates regarding their financial experience and credentials. That's an attachment. The meeting adjourned at approximately 7:50 PM. After the board has passed a resolution appointing audit committee members, we will schedule an audit committee meeting to review the management letter and corrective action plan for our 2020 independent audit. That's the audit committee, committee meeting. Okay. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on 1/28/21 via Zoom call at 5:35 PM. In attendance were David Warner, Laser Alert, Heather Gordon, Deborah Dionis, Chris Fallon, Lisa Raymond, Walter Simon, Steve Morton, Fred Seba, Amy Ashley Moore, Catherine McGee, Ashley Pineda, Michael Falcone, James Whittington, Steve Lewis, Amy Huang, Jason Lee, Dave Breachlal, Tanya Drojic, Jessica Muldoon, and Carol Allen. We, one, introduced ourselves and adopted meeting notes from the 11/24/20 meeting. Two, welcomed Lisa Raymond, our new interim assistant superintendent for business. Three, discussed the budget development process, budget draft one, the tax cap, sales tax revenue, and state aid. The administration will provide a presentation this evening that will cover most of this, so I'm not going to go over that. Members of the committee expressed support for maintaining the $1.3 million per year capital projects allocation as we did in last year's budget. There were questions about the governor's state aid proposals on the STAR program. Governor is again proposing that expense-based funding such as BOSI's reimbursements and transportation reimbursements be consolidated into a single flat amount services aid category that's frozen at the current levels. The district's STAR reimbursement could be cut, and the difference made up was federal bailout money. That's okay for this year. The problem is that when the federal money runs out in the future years, we lose STAR income and the state blames it on the federal government. All this is not good for our district, and community members advocated that parents and community members write to our New York State legislators and the governor's office. So that's Andrew Stewart-Cousins, Tom Abinanti, and Governor Cuomo, expressing these concerns. This is all laid out in the January 25th topic in the Association of School Business Officials website, asboNewYork.com. Just Google ASBO, you know, ASBO expresses concerns, and it'll all pop up there for you. Lisa Raymond is confirming that we can post information on our district website regarding this. You know, if it's possible to have like a letter-writing campaign with something on our website for it. Last year, GCSD Proposition 1 allowed up to $3 million from excess unaccount-allocated fund balance to be transferred to the River Pair Reserve Fund with no increase in taxes. The proposition passed 2,519 yes to 445 no. The committee recommends, including Proposition 1 on the ballot again this year, and we'll see about next, we think we're probably going to do it for several years running. Four, discuss funds available for capital projects. Lisa Raymond provided a spreadsheet and detailed fund balances and repair project costs from July 2016 to the present, including mansion roof and playground allocations. We have $1.1 million in our repair reserve and $3.8 million in our capital for a total, not a 4.1 anymore, but a 4.9 million dollars. Our five-year projection should assume a $1.3 million will be added every year to the capital reserve as part of the school budget. We have an outstanding suggestion from a previous administrator that the employee reserve fund balance be reallocated. We have too much money in that. The committee recommends that the administration create a proposal for moving some of our existing employee retirement system reserve into a teacher's retirement system reserve fund and into our capital reserve fund. Five, discuss current facility status. Michael Falcone provided an update. We go building by building. ECP main building, no new issues. Building is empty due to ventilation requirements. LEF Jackson, no new issues. New playground equipment is funded and ordered. Hyview, no new issues. New playground equipment is funded and ordered. We replaced two ventilation fans that failed. RJ Bailey, lot of stuff. Legionella issue was resolved by December. Test results were negative. We're good there. Temperature, building is warm. One, it's not even a full-size classroom. Reported that it's cool. Custodians are checking whether the temperature is 68 degrees or not. Steam has plenty of BTUs to keep the rest of the building warm. Gym ventilation, both PRMs came in. Permanent fan motor is delivered for installation and electrical work, and, and that'll be scheduled for, for the winter break, 215 to 219. And so that's, that's for the gymnasium. You notice we had a couple of temporary fans up there, and so we're going to get the big fan to work again. Masonry and brick pointing work is ongoing, replacing rotted lentils when students are outside the building. Old fencing is being replaced, including a new 16-foot high fence section behind the basketball backstop. They have the backstop facing the back fence, so if anybody misses the backboard, it kind of sails off into the pond. So 16-foot fence should stop that. Cleaning out stream across from to Riley, from Riley Pond, town needs to dredge. They're removing, we are removing some rubbish, and the town has provided dumpsters. The landscape buffer suggestion for adjacent property next to the car wash, which is expanding. If the approved project landscaping does not provide sufficient noise buffer, we could provide some plantings for their side of the property for a cost of around $3,000. Since the meeting, Dr. Allen has provided a copy of the towns that she got from the, from the town, plans she got from the town. Playground equipment, Greenberg planning board and the town board both have accepted the agreement on the split cost, $75,000 for each side. The assumption is that if we have cost overruns, it's on our side. Woodlands, no new issues. Security vestibule, Board of Education, December 1st discussion is a modified version of option two to be constructed. Mansion, BBS to confirm status of NYSED approval. Roof project scheduled for summer 2021. Ventilation is a separate issue. Caretaker's house demolition. They're waiting a permit. The, the hole up is asbestos-related. If the permit and the weather permits, we just had this giant snowstorm, demolition could begin with the next, within the next two and a half weeks. Six, discuss the facilities project recommendation process. Fred Seba of BBS Architects reviewed the completed estimated expense priorities to accompany the building condition survey and an updated rough estimate on adding an ECP wing to LEF Jackson. Committee members noted a total cost of $12 million to fix all ventilation issues and $20 million to fix all high priority building envelope issues. It's too much. We've got to have a subset. Pre-BBS ventilation is higher priority than roof replacement? LED lighting and automatic temperature control are issues for an energy performance contract. BBS can issue an RFP for a vendor proposal for saving energy. I believe we tried this a number of years ago, but we never adopted the contract. This costs the district nothing and the taxpayers nothing, as payments are based on the energy savings we realize. The committee recommends that the Board of Education authorize an RFP be issued for an energy performance contract. Several committee members advocated we focus on ventilation issues at RJ Bailey. We revised the LEF Jack, the revised LEF Jackson ECP wing estimate for BBS starts from about $11 million. If we're including room for 130 students and administrators, you can make a smaller addition and it will cost less. And we will require more than one school year to complete. Committee members understand it will be necessary to pass a bond at some point over the five-year period to improve our facilities and have varying expectations as to the amount of the bond. BBS will work with the administration to provide information on financial impact to taxpayers. We agreed to, A, allow BBS to provide the committee with a single five-year proposal based on our limited funds at our next meeting. B, gather feedback on the proposal from the community using an online survey and allow facilities inspections COVID requirements allowing. And C, present a single recommendation to the Board of Education for approval, and we're trying to do this by next month. The meeting adjourned at 8:00 PM. The next meeting of the Finance and Facilities Committee is February 11th at 6:00 PM via Zoom call. That's it.
Thank you, David. Tracy Mears.
Hi, David. Good evening. Um... Huh?
I was just saying, Terry, next.
Um, so it sounds like you guys did a lot at the facilities and fiscal committee meeting. That's awesome. Yeah, I, I, I was on in the beginning, and I just want to say, Ms. Raymond, you were amazing in the first 30 minutes, and I had to log off. Unfortunately, didn't, I was watching as a parent, and it didn't work with my schedule, but so thank you guys for your hard work. I just had a couple of questions, David, because I logged off after the first 30 minutes. I didn't, I wasn't on watching for your discussion about the ECP wing at LEF Jackson?
Yes.
And, and you take super detailed minutes, so thank you so much. That there were 130 students and administration, but that it would take more than a year to complete. When would we, like this September? I know ECP has their, their registration night right now, like tonight. So we're going to have students hopefully returning to schools in September 2021 for the 21-22 school year. Where would those kids go? And I, and I don't know if things have changed, but I think we have many more than 130 students. Is that regular ed and then the special ed or counted separately? I don't know if Mr. Reynolds, no, did anybody work with ECP on this?
This is, this is straight off the state reports. They don't, they didn't pull out anything for ungraded that I could see at the ECP level.
I only asked because, I mean, my kid was at ECP two years ago, and it was much higher than 130. So maybe we need to check those numbers. I don't know if numbers in the past, you know, sometimes kids get dropped here and there with, with regard to state records, so maybe we need to check that. But what is the plan for this? Oh, I see, Dr. Reynolds.
We currently have 125 students in ECP, all students combined.
All right, okay. I will take your word for it.
Right.
I will take your word for it, but I'm, I'm, okay. So do you know if anyone worked directly with ECP on that?
No, it's, it's the beds enrollment. It came...
Okay, so ECP was...
Is what happened in October. So it changes over the course of the year. So if you're up to 120 now, and you...
Understand. So, um, so my next question is, what are we going to do for September? Or my main question is, what are we going to do for September? What's the plan? Are they going to be split like this still with Hyview and LEF Jackson?
Well, that's the, that's the good question. I mean, we did ask about, in terms of prioritization, they, they did quiz us about the ECP main building. And we said, you know, it's, it's grandfathered in from, is it like a converted 1907 barn, but, but it's not safe without doing the fixing the ventilation. That's why we evacuated in the first place, right? And given that, you know, COVID isn't going to magically disappear instantly, it's better that we have the current ventilation standards for that building as well. There's $575,000 worth of items on the BCS for that. We have the money. It's a matter of having the time and, and the approval from the state. I don't know if you have to declare an emergency, but if you're looking and saying, okay, what if we want to go back and, and put all the kids back into, into all the schools very quickly? And we've had some suggestions about that from the community. And if you look at Hyview and you say, well, we've got all these, you know, ECP administrators, we've got ECP classrooms in Hyview. If all the kids come back, we have to put them somewhere. So the, the simplest thing to do is to put them back in the ECP main building, but you've got to do that $575,000 worth of, right? So, so you can't do it instantly. If you declare an emergency, you could do it relatively quickly. I don't see us getting done before the end of the school year. But we'd have to set the wheels in motion in order for that to, to happen. So that can be built into the proposal, but you, you've got to have, you had to have it happen soon.
Sorry, I'm muted. So I'm, I'm very, it is going to have to happen soon, and I'm wondering who's managing this. I think I'm very, I also heard you say, which is totally separate issue, that we're still not done with the demolition over at the caretaker's house, and I...
Yeah, waiting on a permit.
Okay, I'm not even going to touch that, because that's, okay. Um, so who's handling this decision with regard to ECP and what's happening? Because at some point, we're going to hopefully have our kids back in school, and I'm just wondering who's actually making the plan here for that, because we, ECP is our feeder to LEF Jackson. We have emails from parents if they pulled their kids out because kids aren't in school. What is...
So it gets to be, it gets to be the 11th, and we come back and BBS comes back to us with their recommendation. We've told them about the issue, so what's going to happen is that ECP is going to come up near the top, because it's a ventilation issue, and they know about the evacuation thing, right? And then from there, we feed it back to you, and, and you pass resolutions on what you want to do.
Okay. All right. Terry, your hand is up.
Thank you. David, a few questions. Just noting here. Okay. So yeah, so listen, question... So yeah, so listen, question, first question I have, I guess, is about. Issue item number four on your note, on your minutes. The committee recommends that the administration create a proposal for moving. Some of the existing employee retirement system reserve into teacher retirement reserve and into the capital reserve fund. So I guess my, my overarching question is. Sorry, can you hear me?
Wherever you.
Try again. We'll get through.
Alright, can you hear me now?
Yeah?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yep, hold on for a second. Yeah, I don't need to see my pretty face anyway. So anyway, is, is that better? Is that better?
Yes, that's better. That's better.
I'm glad I made you. So I, I guess my question or point is this, committees don't recommend to the administration. Committees, the committee is supposed to recommend to the board. So. You know.
Want to pass it through?
Well, I, I want the correct, I want to do things correctly is what I want to do, is what I want to see done. So along with that. I guess part of the issue I then had is what was Lisa Raymond's point on this? But again, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. And certainly. This is, you know, there's something, you know, not quite right here. Recommend if we're asking the committee to, if the committee is asking the administration to do something. I mean, this committee, is, is this, is this a board committee, by the way? Just refresh my memory. It is a board committee, right? Okay, okay, yeah, that's all. Wait, wait, is it a board committee or is it a district committee?
District committee.
The district committee.
Okay, so, and the only, and, and district committees. Don't make recommendations and Carol, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. District committees don't make recommendations to the administration. I mean, no committee makes recommendations to the administration. It's the committee's recommendation to the full board.
So here's my, here's my problem. We don't have the numbers yet. We have the concept, because Mary gave us the concept, but she didn't tell us exactly how much would go into each. Category. You've got three different places to put the money. One, you leave it alone.
Got it.
Two others, right. So, so the administration has to do some work before we can make the actual recommendation.
I'm sorry, Terry, I was just gonna ask, who's the liaison? Terry, go, go, Terry?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me? So, so.
So if you want to stop it at the conceptual level, we can, but.
I, I don't, I don't want to stop anything, but what I want to do is make sure we do things correctly here. And so you said, Mary, basically Mary left before she got to finish this. So if that is indeed the case. That's, that's not, that's not for the committee to tell the administration to pick that up. That's for Dr. Chase to have a conversation, I guess, with Lisa and, and pick that up. Or perhaps, you know, Lisa to, to call. What's our former person? I can't believe I'm blanking on this. Oh, Mary, I'm sorry. And, and have a little professional discussion about where this is. Because again, my concern is this, number one, it's not the proper way to do things. And number two, we're starting to get. Here, who probably don't have the expertise to talk about moving this from that account and moving on that account. And frankly, the only people that I feel confident in, in, in. And suggesting that, recommending that would be either Lisa. Or Dr. Chase with information from Lisa or obviously, you know, when Mary was here. Who, and she used to make those kind of recommendations, so.
That's why we're asking them to create the proposal.
And, and again, I'm saying to you, David, I'm very clear. I'm saying to you that the committee doesn't ask the administration to create that proposal.
Why not?
It just doesn't work that way, because it doesn't. Carol, can you weigh in here? Is that, is that the role of to mentor the administration what to do?
Can, so the way that your policy reads, it's that this district-wide committee is advisory to the Board of Education. So I believe what I'm hearing is that David has reported that the committee is advising the board. That these steps still need to be taken. And the board can request of its administration that they take the steps.
Does the board?
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing. And what I'm reading, thank you, what I'm hearing and what I'm reading is this. And, and this is what I heard and this is what I read. The committee recommends that the administration create a proposal. So that is clear, that is clear, and that is exactly what David said. Because thank goodness, I, I know my David well, he's very precise in his language. That doesn't mean he's always right or, or anything, and I'm not making a, I'm not criticizing as much as I am pointing out. That indeed what was said is that the committee recommends that the administration, and that is backwards. That is not the way it works, as you just said, Carol.
You want me to say, you want me to say that the committee recommends that the board recommends that the administration?
No, I think with.
I want it done correctly is what I want done. That's what I want done, so that we don't have any problems. Okay, that's what I want done. I don't want to stop the process. I just want to make sure we do things correctly. Let me move on to something else. So the other issue that I, question I have is this, so David, again, you guys undertook quite a bit of work here. And, and you have these recommendations, but can these recommendations bubble up to the agenda? Those recommendations that are for the board, so for instance. On number six, you said the committee recommends that the BOE authorize an RFP. Be issued for an emergency performance contract. I'm just curious, you know, why that didn't bubble up already on the, on the, on the agenda like the audit committee recommendation did.
I wanted to hear whether or not the board wants to do that or not. So, so the audit committee recommendation is very, very cut and dried. Right? You know everything that you need to know in order to make the recommendation. The board could come back on, on these things and say, no, we don't want to do it like that. So on the ERSTRS thing, they might say, oh, we want to split it between ERS and TRS, but, but not go to the capital piece. Or maybe we don't need the split, or, right? Contract, you could say, oh, we did that before and we never went through with it. Why should we do it this time?
That makes sense, that makes sense, but, so again, so again, I guess what I'm suggesting to you is this. You know, I listened to you and read it, I thought, okay, they're gonna be making this recommendation. But perhaps maybe instead of recommending, when you want to solicit information from us. You, you say, we're looking for your back and guidance on this. Because I thought, as I heard it and as I. That you guys were, that we moved forward on this.
We do, we want to, but the board has to decide.
Well, yes, I know.
That's why it's a recommendation.
Okay, alright, so let me, two other quick questions, because I don't want to spend too much. It, 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 forgive me if you already answered this. What was Mike Falcone's view on the energy performance contract?
He was fine with it.
Okay. Secondly, also. Through Dr. Chase, if I may, and Lisa, if you could just weigh in here on this proposal or recommendation. Move money from the, from the reserve funds to the capital reserve fund. And Lisa, if you're not prepared to discuss it right now, it's alright, I can wait until, you know. But again, you know, I'm nervous when I hear non-experts talk about stuff. Particularly as it relates to money. And I, I just want to hear your thoughts on this. And if, and again, if you don't have anything right now, I'm okay with that.
Um, I'd like to look into it a little bit more before I, I give you guys a report on, on what to do.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, answer that.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Tracy?
Hi, can I confirm, so when you asked about the liaisons, I really didn't get an answer. Is it Ms. Raymond and Mr. Falcone that are the liaisons together? Okay, and they were both, at least when I logged in, they were both at the meeting, so, okay. Okay, so what is the plan for September for, for ECP? Can I get like a straight answer? We're waiting for a report and then what? Then we are opening main building, we're gonna hopefully fix it. What is the plan? Did they answer that? I don't know.
They come back to us with something on the eleventh.
Okay.
So when we see that, they know how much money we have to work with, Lisa told them. They know what's most important. They know the fact that we have, we have all these ventilation issues. And so they'll come back with the proposal. The one other thing we committed to is to do some kind of a survey to the public to see how, what people think about it. And we come back and then we try and get that to you within the next, the, the board, not the board meeting next week. But the board work session that follows, after the, yes, the March work session. Then we know what we're doing and the board can decide what they want to do from there.
Awesome. Thank you so much for breaking that down, because I just don't want this to, to like linger. And so, okay, and then are we going to, and thank you for clarifying the amount of students there. My main concern about the amount of students is funding and I don't, I want to make sure that we don't lose so many students as well. And then our, our funding and our program ends up shrinking when we have a, a demand for more students later. So I want to make sure that we're able to service and provide early childhood for as many families as we want it. In the future, so thank you for explaining that. And you said your next meeting is on the eleventh of February? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Kara, see you're, you don't have your mute on. Does that mean you want to say something? Or no? Okay, alright. So let me, I, I gotta piggyback on Terry's point. So I do understand the committee would be providing. The board their recommendations, right? In regards to whatever it is, right? David, no matter whatever you bring, your, your committee will be coming to the board to provide a recommendation.
Yep.
I, I'm, I'm listening to what everyone is saying here and I'm also trying to figure out. I guess the collaboration takes place with the two. District representatives that are on the committee.
And there were three architects from BBS in attendance at the meeting.
Okay, because I think too, I'm trying to ensure that, like, I'm thinking in my head, it needs to come to us to. We, we need to hear the recommendation ourselves for us to do, you know, take some sort of action or not.
You want to invite BBS to the meeting?
No, I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying that. I guess what I'm saying is, I guess when any committee in general, right? If we're bringing like a recommendation, usually, at least this is how I think about it. Usually it's been done in consultation with whoever the district representative is. So that input is, you know, you have all the information that you need. So. As you're reporting this, I'm also thinking, okay, this is from the, the committee. And I'm trying to figure out when does the, you know, the, the administration weigh in themselves? So that when we get the recommendation, we're getting like a full recommendation of the committee. But also the administration at the same time.
So you're looking for the superintendent?
I mean, yeah, the administration as a whole, whoever would be a part of that to help make that decision. Unless that is not the correct thinking. And I guess if we, if, if the committee makes a recommendation to us, we can either say yay or nay. And even if we say yay. The, the administration still has the opportunity to weigh in to that recommendation.
Want the, you, you want the information to go to a wider audience prior to when I bring it to the board?
I think that is what I'm trying to say. I feel like usually when we, when we get it, it's like we're getting it. And we're making a decision here or there, and I think we need to have all of the information before that.
Okay, I can, I can provide the, everybody, as big a distribution list as you want. Of, of what we get, we'll give it to you and we got a lot of information for you.
Alright.
Can I just request one more thing? Is it possible to have the facilities director here at our meetings? Because we have Ms. Raymond, if we're gonna be having these conversations very soon, specifically about ECP. I don't necessarily think that the architects have to be here, engineers have to be here. But I, I do wonder if our own facilities director should be here to kind of answer some of these questions before we, you know, when we make a decision on. Where the money is gonna go and the recommendations actually come in. Is that possible?
Can check on his availability when that time comes. But I'll check on his availability.
Okay, cool. And thank you, David, for getting feedback from the parents and the staff community about. About ECP and how we're gonna move forward, because I think that's so important. I, I need to hear from people. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. David, is that it for your reports?
That's it for my reports.
Okay, are there any other board members with report, committee reports? Okay, hearing none. We now have our budget discussion.
Laser is gonna put the PowerPoint up for me.
Alright, thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Laser.
Alright, so the board received two things. They received the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two draft one budget. They also received information from me regarding the budget appropriation status report. Which pretty much gives them all itemized lined and budget codes. Every year that I have served as a superintendent, I typically start off with draft one as a pretty inflated budget. And really, it's a reflection of everyone's wish list. So those who are watching on YouTube and those who are, and, and for the board members who are here. Just know that this is the wish list and part of our responsibility is to take a look at the wish list, see where we are. And then identify where we'd like to be, and there's a whole process of narrowing down to the ultimate goal. But I need to hear from the board as to what the ultimate goal is in terms of. A budget that everyone is comfortable presenting to the community in May. So for now, I ask that we give our attention to Ms. Raymond. As she go over the draft one budget with the community members and with the board, and then we'll have some conversation about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Chase. Okay, Laser, you can go to the next slide, please. So we're gonna start with how the tax cap was calculated. We take the tax levy from this school year, less any county changes, which there weren't any. So we were gonna start with the sixty-one million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, twenty-seven dollars. And then you multiply that by a tax-based growth factor. Which represents construction and improvements on residential and commercial property that have happened through the year. To that, you add back in pilot payments, which are payments in lieu of taxes. And these are for businesses, commercial businesses and developments. That are attracted to come into Westchester and the Westchester IDA will make a deal with them. To give them pilots, which is a, a payment in lieu of taxes, which is a lesser payment. Than their property taxes would be for ten years, okay? And that's what attracts business to your county. So we would add back the pilots that were collected in the prior year. And then to that, we would now deduct the capital exclusion, which represents any debt service that the district has. Our share of both these capital expenses, less our building aid. Then that total is multiplied by the allowable levy growth factor, which you know is the CPI. the Consumer Price Index, and it's the lesser of 2% or what CPI is determined to be for the period of July through June of a fiscal year. And that this year is 1.23%. Then we have to deduct the pilot payments that we know we would collect next year from that tax levy. And um, when you set the tax, um, excuse me, when you set the tax cap each year, if you don't use what the simple majority is, you can add what's called a carryover to your next year's budget, which is 1.5% of the prior year. You can add it back, you can subtract it out, you can add partial payment or a partial um amount, but it can't go over whatever the carryover is determined to be by the Office of the State Comptroller. And then we add back our capital exclusion um for that is what we are legally liable for to pay um in any budget. So the, the tax cap for next school year for a simple majority, which would be 50% plus one of the voters voting to um vote yes, would be sixty-three million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Okay, next, Laser. So that represents, if you went with the simple majority, that represents a 3.04% increase from this year's tax levy to that simple majority. Okay, and you'll see draft one budget um with all the wishes that everybody is uh asking for is coming just over seventy-four million dollars, which represents a 4.19% increase in the budget. Next. So a budget, a school budget is broken down into various different categories. And these listed here are the major expenses that we call the objects. Okay, so it's all salaries and benefits, BOSI's, supplies, equipment, textbooks, tuition, contractual. Every code has all of these um categories in it. What we did was we pulled out transportation and we pulled out operations and maintenance because they are two of the larger categories. We kept salaries and benefits all together and BOSI's expenditures all together. But everything else in transportation and buildings and grounds, we lumped into their own category so you could see how much is being spent there. So salaries and benefits is the largest of um any school budget. And in this uh budget that we are presenting for draft one equals 69% of the budget. Transportation comes in next at 9.2% increase, and then operations and maintenance comes in at a 5.7% increase. Next, Laser. So if you wanted to break it down even further, there are um five different functions they're called in a budget. The general support, instruction, transportation, employee benefits, and any inter-fund transfers and debt service. Okay? And Laser, if you'll go to the next screen, we'll break these down by each one of these categories. So under general support, you will find the Board of Education category. And under that is board expenses, the district clerks' expenses, and the district meeting, or otherwise known as the budget vote. All falls under the Board of Education. So for the 21-22 school year, it's proposed to increase um or to budget a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, which is um an increase of seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. What's included in this increase is um all board expenses, including budgeting for board members to go to the New York State School Boards Association Convention. Okay? That wasn't budgeted for this year because of the pandemic, but it is being put in there if the board so chooses that you want to go. That is part of this um increase there. Okay, just so you know. And then under central administration, that in, involves um the superintendent's office, all business operations, all of our auditing services that we have to comply with by law, the treasurer, fiscal agents, our legal fees, personnel, records management, and public information. There is an increase here in um one of the BOSI's line items. Uh, we don't have the BOSI's numbers yet for next school year, so we have to kind of base it on what the increase was from this year. But we also um know that we will see an increase in expenses in our financial software, so that is budgeted here. As well as, there is an increase here for legal services that I believe are anticipated, and that's all based on the history of the past couple of years. Operations and maintenance is also budgeted um under general support, and that basically is everything for building operations, maintenance, grounds, um, the whole shebang for Mike Falcone's department. And in here, you'll see that this is a, a large increase that he's asking for, five hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. And that involves equipment replacement. It involves um some improvements that he plans on continuing throughout each of the school buildings. And there's an um, a substantial increase in supplies and, and handheld equipment that is needed for the pandemic and to keep our facilities clean with the new um guidelines that are out. Okay? And there's also an increase here um in utilities for what um is being anticipated. Under technology, this is um where our central data processing is and our copier leases are here. And if you remember, we have those on an IPA lease agreement, so that goes and continues over a fi, I believe a five-year period. And then there are special items, and under the special items are all of our insurances except for uh health insurance. This is the general liability insurance, cyber insurance, all of, all of the other insurances. That gets budgeted here. Any refunds of property taxes, um judgments and claims, BOSI's administrative costs and dues are all budgeted on the special items line. So in the general support um section of the budget, which are all the 1,000 codes, we are proposing a budget of nine million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars or an increase of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars, which is a 6.8% increase. Next. The largest of all of the components, as it should be, is the instructional um section of any school budget. Okay? So under here, you'll see that this is um the 2,000 codes are the administration. And what is involved in that is um curriculum and instruction, Dr. Reynolds and his departments, curriculum writing, in-service training, all secretarial staffs, principals, directors, coordinators. All of those salaries and stipends are budgeted um in these codes. Also included in here, again, like was in the first slide, all supplies, materials, contractual items, equipment that needs to be replaced, um conferences, anything that uh they have asked to go, to go to. So we're asking for an increase of um one hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars under administration. Then regular instruction. This is the portion of the budget that uh where all of our teachers, our teacher assistants, aides, monitors, office staffs, substitutes. Um, after-school programs are all budgeted here. Um, there are quite a few equipment replacement requests, such as um the whiteboards and some of the document cameras, things like that. Uh, there are increases for um conferences that um teachers would like to go on, administrators would like to go on. Uh, they're budgeted here for textbooks and for class trip expenses have all been budgeted under um this line item. So for regular instruction, it's a 4.7% increase from this year um for seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollar increase. And then you have special education, and you'll notice here under special education, it looks like there is a decrease in the dollar change. And there is a decrease, but that is basically because um after looking at the budget and analyzing uh this year, last year to this year, I noticed that Mary was trying to clean up some of the places that people were being paid out of. Because there are so many other codes, for example, speech, nurses, psychologists, they have their own codes, but sometimes they were getting stuck in the special ed budget. So she tried to clean that up and put them in the proper codes. So there really isn't a decrease here. It's just that it's been shifted to other areas. Um, so I've looked at that budget and um I plan on meeting with Jill just to go over it once more, because I want to make sure that everything is in line and that she anticipates the number of students that she's going to have that are in district and that are at a district so that we can um stay in line with our tuition and our BOSI services. Then under instructional um support, that is the 2,600 codes, and that is basically library, the education TV, television, and technology. And the increases here are increases in computer equipment. Carlos and I have been going over and devising and coming up with a rotational cycle on equipment so that we know we can forecast out for at least five years where the district should be, uh, what should be replaced on, and so that everything isn't replaced all in one year, and it would be one big hit. Also, the IPA um uh leases are coming due and that has to be renewed, and that is all factored um under this instructional support. And then you have the pupil personnel section, which is where you budget for attendance, guidance, health services, psychologists, social workers, speech, co-curricular activities, and athletics. So the total instructional um budget at this time is thirty-six million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Or then that equates to a 3.5% increase. Next. Then we have uh our pupil transportation and the district transportation. That is where we budget for the transportation supervisor and his office, where we budget for the fuel that we purchase and for um any equipment replacement that um Frank has asked for. And then under contracted transportation, this is the contract that we have with uh Royal. Um, and we anticipate possibly having some additional needs for out-of-district transportation. And we also have to factor into here that in May, the CPI at that time will be what the uh increase in a contract for transportation can be increased by. It can't be increased um any greater than what the CPI is. So we're um recommending six million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in transportation or a 7.6% increase. Next. And the next is our, our employee benefits. And this is where we budget for TRS and ERS payments. And ERS averages um between 14.6 and 15% each year. There are six tiers, just like there are with the teacher's retirement, TRS. Um, but ERS has different categories under those tiers, and you have to figure out where each, where your employees fall in under those. TRS this year came in at 9.53% increase, and looking on their website, they are recommending to schools that you budget anywhere between nine and a half and 10%, which is not a surprise to anyone because TRS did release the statement last year that said there will be increases, um steady increases over the next three to five years. Um, so that school should anticipate that. Social Security is still coming in at 7.65% of payroll. Our workers' comp, uh, we're still waiting on some of those numbers, but I believe that it'll be close to um where it is this year, or maybe a little less. Our life insurance and our unemployment, we're leaving um relatively the same. Our disability insurance will go up a little. And our health and dental and vision insurance, um, they're anticipating anywhere between a 4.9 and a 7% increase in health insurance. So we're watching that closely to see where that will come in. And then we have the uh union welfare contribution that we make um to our unions. So we're anticipating or at least eighteen million, five hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars or a 4% increase in our employee benefits for next year. Next. Then we have our debt and our inter-fund transfers. We budget twenty-five thousand dollars just as a placeholder in, in anticipation if we ever have to go for a tax anticipation note. And that would just be a very, it would be a short-term borrowing until we collected um real property taxes, and then you would pay that back. It's very similar to a bond anticipation note. Those are short-term obligations before you turn a a ban into a bond. And then we um will keep the same transfer to the federal funds because of the timing of when their year ends and when our year ends of the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then our transfer to debt service next year will be zero. We made our final payment on our debt service this month, so there is no longer any debt out there for our district. And um because of that, we upped the amount of transfer to the capital fund um above the 1.3 million to one point, almost 1.6 million to see if possibly it um could be affordable to replenish or to build up that capital fund um reserve. Well, it's not really a reserve, to build up the capital fund. So we're proposing for debt and inter-fund transfers of two million, thirty-one thousand dollars, which is a 4.4% decrease, and that's mainly because we're done with our debt service uh obligation. Next. So basically, uh, next what I'm, I, I put here, what will be done with the 1.581 million dollars for the capital project? That I would leave up to you as a board to decide where, do, are, are we going to follow the the uh architects' recommendations in their uh plan? Um, is there something that you want to be earmarked, or do we want to just put it in the capital fund and, and build it up so that some of these larger projects can be done instead of having to possibly bond in the future? Next. So then we come to the revenue section of the um, the budget. And as David had mentioned in his committee report, the first round of the state aid figures have been released by the governor. The governor's runs this year are very complicated and convoluted proposal in the most recent history of state aid, which is raising serious concerns that could have long-term negative implications for districts. Um, right now, there's 3.8 billion dollars in federal funding available as part of the governor's budget, but much of this is being used to backfill $2 billion of reductions elsewhere. If we use the federal funds to balance the state's budget, it reminds me of the gap elimination uh times where he was, we were using the federal ARAM money to um meet the, the gap that was in the budget, and it took us five years to um get that gap elimination aid paid out to school districts. It almost seems that this is, we're, we're headed down that, that same road. Foundation aid, once again, is frozen. Nobody's getting any more money, so any, eh, any more of the millions and millions of dollars that are owed to school is not even on the table and is not even um being spoken about. And then once again this year, the governor is proposing to eliminate expense-based aids, which are like BOSI's, textbooks, transportation aid. You have to spend the money in order to get the state aid. He wants to get rid of that. Take 11 different categories and consolidate it into one single block that he um would, would freeze at the 2021-22 rates, and you wouldn't make anymore. So even if you put everything through a BOSI's, it doesn't matter. And you wouldn't make anymore. So even if you put everything through a BOSIs, it doesn't matter. It wouldn't generate any more aid, which would be a loss for school districts. And again, this also includes a reduction in STAR. STAR has never been included in state aid runs because STAR isn't a state aid mechanism. It was put there for the taxpayers as an exemption to help them with their taxes. By including it here, the state would use, try to use the federal, combine it with the federal monies. And when the federal monies run out and now there's a shortfall, it's going to be, STAR is going to be bye bye. So usually when the governor's numbers are released and then the legislature will release their numbers and then they have to talk and then something will come out of it all. The governor's numbers are always the most pessimistic numbers that are released to all school districts. So I would anticipate that our state aid number here would increase as the talks continue. And then under miscellaneous revenues, then you have the tax levy you see as proposed in the tax cap. But then under the miscellaneous revenues, this is everything else that we collect. So for example, the pilot payments, the payments in lieu of taxes are included here, our sales tax. Now, this year, everybody reduced the sales tax collection because of the pandemic. Nobody knew exactly what was going to happen. I've been tracking with Westchester releases a quarterly statement to the district and I've been tracking our collection and we have been doing very well. And they believe that it is in part by not so much people are getting back out there, but internet sales are really booming. So I raised, I increased that line item for revenue. And then we bill for tuition, health services, Medicaid and the rental of the facilities mainly from Royal that we collect. So to balance this budget, again, it's the seventy four million, one hundred and forty four thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars or almost just under a three million dollar change from budget to budget. Next. So what is next is we're waiting on the final state aid numbers that should be finalized, hopefully sometime in March, but it's all due by April first. I would like to review the budgets with Dr. Chase and Dr. Reynolds and the different administrators to understand where they are and what their ideas were behind their, some of their numbers. And we'll have to adjust as necessary based on our meetings. Review all the aided categories and we are currently in the process of trying to review retirements. And really get a sense from the board where you want Dr. Chase to go with the budget so that we can be prepared for the next presentation.
I just want to add, thank you Lisa, did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to add that although in the previous slide, it spoke about a draft two due in March. In our discussion this morning, Lisa Corey and I, Lisa, Dr. Reynolds, Lisa Raymond, Dr. Reynolds and I agreed that we're not necessarily married to the March date. We're happy to move this along quicker, but we just need some guidance and some feedback from the board in, in reference to draft two. And also too, we need to take a look at the retirements once again to see if those positions need to be replaced. Or if there are some creative things in which we can do with those retired positions. And so we need to take a look again at forecasted enrollment of our students or the following year. We just, there's a couple of things that we need to review and we need to just get some information about, you know, what will the opening of school look like? Before we actually are prepared to share with you draft two. So we, we thank you. We know, we just want the community to know a few things. And one, the budget vote is set for March eighteenth. The reason why there is a May, I got March on my brain. My kid's birthday month, why not? So, um, May eighteenth, and the reason why there is a TBD is because we don't know if it's going to be an absentee ballot. We don't know if people are coming to the polls or not. That's something that will, I'm sure will be addressed at a later time. Lisa, you can move to the next. What I want everyone to know is that we recognize that not everyone is able to watch this board meeting, right? And we know that there's a community that's curious about where, where are we in the budget process for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two? So we've asked Steve Lewis to just extract this portion of the board meeting. So that there's a separate video that's just focused on budget draft one. It'll be on our website for public consumption along with this presentation so that people will be able to see the process of the budget development. And as always, if there are any questions, we've maintained that email. Obviously it changes every year. So if there are any budget related questions, please send them to budget two zero two one two two at greenbergcSD.org. It is on the bottom. But if you can't see it, again, it is budget two zero two one two two at greenbergcSD.org. We're happy to answer any budget related questions, community members may have. But again, if you give us about twenty four, forty eight hours, I want to give Steve time to just extract this portion of the meeting. So that people can actually see and hear the budget presentation at their own time and we'll, we'll have the the full PowerPoint also available and it will be conspicuously placed on our website.
Thank you, Dr. Chase and thank you, Lisa Raymond for your work on this presentation. I see that Tanya Dragic has her hand up.
Yes, so Lisa, hi, that, that was a really great presentation. I just wanted to understand whether this overall budget increase from around seventy one to around seventy four million. You said that there was a one point five eight one million inter fund transfer that was supposed to go to capital projects? Is that, that's actually included in that, in that increase?
Correct, yes.
So that would be something that we would, we would set aside for capital projects and, and my question, my second question is that won't make us go over our allowable, I think there's an allowable cap on that. If I'm correct, like a four percent or something of the total budget. And so we're not going to go over that because I know that some districts were penalized for going over that cap.
That's a very good question. Let me check into that to make sure I know exactly where we are at this time.
Right. I mean, I guess if we do. So I guess the corollary to that question is because we do have these around four million that at the fiscal and facilities committee meeting, we talked, we talked about actually finally spending them out on projects. So then the corollary is if we actually vote to spend that money on a project, does that allow us then to sort of start filling up that kind of piggy bank again?
Exactly, yes, exactly. And when you transfer money into a capital fund, when you're asking the taxpayers to do that, we really have to attach something to it. We have to let them know, here's what we plan on doing with it. We just can't say, oh, we want to take this money and put it over here. Yeah, they have to vote on, no, they have to know what they're voting on.
Okay, so, so I, I would really appreciate if you could just tell us whether putting the one point five eight one million will bump us over that limit. And also then if it does, how soon we have to make a decision on spending out what we have so that we can put this money, you know, so that we can kind of refill as we go along.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Care?
Yes, Ms. Care, you have questions?
No, I have something that's very simple, but I was looking here and it says on, I think it's under major expenses by category. The, the dates are wrong. Excuse me, the dates are wrong. You have twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. I think it should be twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Yes, I, yes, I, I see that. I will, I will make sure I change that. Thank you.
And thank you for the, for the presentation. It's one of the best ones I've heard in a long time.
Oh, thank you.
Does any of the board members have any questions? Okay. Oh, Dr. Chase and Tracy?
So before we go off to draft two, we're going to need some direction from the board. As to, you know, what would you like to see as a bottom line ask of the community? So that we could go back to our administrators with their wish lists and have courageous conversations about what's realistic and what's not.
Okay, Tracy?
Sorry, I didn't realize that's still muted. Um, so my question is about COVID. So this draft one totally going to be, I guess revamped as we go along the process. But is this assuming that everyone is in person or everyone is at home? How, how was, was COVID and the situation kind of factored into this draft?
So it made the assumption that it was a full regular school, like every back at school. It used that as an assumption, but let's talk about reality. I, I do not, I am not confident that we are going to be post COVID in September. I'm just not that confident. And so that's another factor that needs to be considered because I do have a feeling that there will be more replacements of technology. There'll be more opportunities for remote learning, more need for Chromebooks and, and things of that sort. And instruction might look a bit different in September. Teacher training has to look different in September. Just the way we do things and some of the safety protocols that we might be mandated to do. And you never know when those mandates will be issued. So you have to take all those factors into consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Tanya?
So I just, I just wanted to, to respond to Dr. Chase. I mean, I, I think really the, the, the budget increase should be as low as possible, right? Because we are, we are in I think in a, in a, in a difficult economic situation and I think that we might feel some of the effects of this down the line. And, and so especially with the town promising a zero percent tax increase. I think that we just need to be mindful of that and you know, ma- make it as tight, but as functional as possible. I think that that's really kind of all I had to say in response to that question.
Okay, um, Dr. Chase, I think I've shared this as well. I think for me, to me, it's developing the budget and, and, and making changes or not making changes with with what is best and what is needed for our students and staff. So what academically, you know, our special programs, all of those things, how do we maintain them in a way that is still effective for everyone in our school district? I know that last year there was major cuts. And, and I think that that was hard but helpful, especially during COVID. And I agree with you that COVID is probably going to be here and around. So though I think there were some things that we cut, like for instance, I believe there was big cuts to let's say teacher training and those things. I, again, I'm just one person, I would want to really get a sense, especially because we most likely will still be working remotely in some form or fashion. Again, can that, can additional money be invested in increasing programs that make our remote learning even more effective and things like that. That's what I, I think about adding additions to. Because we did cut in certain places. So if there's trainings that teachers can go to that help them do even better than what they're doing during COVID, that's great. Those type of things are the things that I think of what's going to enhance our education. And still being frugal, but having a balance. And really, I'm interested to know what the administration want, what, what are, what are the principles I'm thinking about? What programs do they see? What, what are their needs that they are picking up on? Those are my thoughts. Carrie, I see your hand is up too.
Yes, thank you. Lisa, question for you. The proposed budget of seventy four point one million, that is that is right at the tax cap? Without going above it?
Yes.
Okay. And last year, do you recall, I know you weren't here and I, I was trying to thumb through your presentation. What was the increase last year? The year over year increase?
The year over year increase. Uh, I have, I have to look that up, but I can find it.
Okay. I, cause I know we, we spent a lot of time last year on the budget. I know we slightly increased it if I, if I recall correctly.
Okay, from, from the, I, I'm looking at the school budget edition newsletter. And it says here that it was a point five eight percent, I believe.
Okay, all right.
Increase.
Right, okay. So I think certainly I'm, I'm happy that you brought this in at the tax levy. Dr. Chase, I guess I would also be curious. Let me ask you this, Dr. Chase, does this budget represent everything that the other administrators, the other building administration, administrators can live with?
This budget represents a wish list. So a wish list, meaning that we basically met with administrative, administrators, we put in everything, pretty much everything that they've requested.
I, I, I find that interesting because in the past, when we had the, the first step in the wish list budget, it, it was higher than this. It was, it was oftentimes above the, the tax cap. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, you know, I want to applaud the administrators for showing some discipline here. Realizing obviously that we're in dire, you know, tough times right now. I, I would say, you know, it's hard to give you a, a number right now, but certainly the fact that you guys are at the tax cap gives us a little room. And certainly we had a, a budget increase, a slight budget increase last year. So I'm inclined to say, you know, something you know, along the lines of what we had or even a little bit more because it sounds like what the, the administrators did was you know, made recommendations that preserved what we already have. And you know, one thing that I, I want to make sure we don't do is cut into bone here. I mean, you know, obviously, you know, we all know of the financial situation that we are under, undergoing. But I think what we still have to remember is that our job here is to educate children and you know, I, I think we do an excellent job at that, but we don't want to you know, make any cuts that are too significant, that may be difficult to recover from. As I recall, Mary saying, and Lisa, you can confirm this or confirm this, or even Dr. Chase. There are some cuts that we can make, that we make that is difficult to recover from.
That is correct.
Right, so that's what I want to make sure we avoid. I mean, obviously, again, difficult situations that we're in, but our priority is educating children. We, we had a slight increase last year. Perhaps we can do a little bit more. Perhaps we can do a little bit more, obviously not go above the tax cap. But make sure that we preserve programs. Uh, and, you know, obviously, I think, as I said before, the administrators have done a good job. They've been very disciplined here by, you know. You know, coming back with recommendations that were well thought out and didn't exceed, uh, the tax cap. As they would, uh, in, in better times, you know, with their first round of, uh, the budget.
Thank you. And, and you're right, there are some cuts that are very difficult to recover. And we are the educa- the business of educating children. What the administrators kept in mind was the nine to thirteen month achievement gap that exists as a result of COVID nineteen. And they took into consideration the interventions that will be needed, whether we're gonna be remote, full, or hybrid. You're going to need interventions to bring children back. They also took into consideration the social emotional needs that kids will have and the training that the teachers will have. Uh, Lisa, uh, Lisa Raymond, Corey Reynolds, and myself talked about the unexpected. Events that are sure to take place next year, like this year. We had quite a few unexpected events. We opened the school year late because we had issues, facilities issues. We had to rectify those issues. That was not considered as we went through last year's budget process. So those things are likely to happen. Um, it's inevitable, if you will. And so you just have to keep that in mind as we're going through this process. We will do our best to come back with a second draft. That obviously, um, looks a little bit different from what we showed you. Um, we still, there's still some work to do. And we're gonna continue to ask the board to provide guidance. Because, um, last year, we had about eight, nine iterations of the budget. We've never done that before, and we're hoping that we can avoid that and, and, and just cut straight to the chase, no pun intended. And just cut straight to the chase and, and is just giving the community what it is that they're looking for. So that they can have a comprehensive understanding of what we're asking them to vote. Um, and so we're hoping that that will happen. Alright. So Ms. Raymond, I know we've got our work to do, Dr. Reynolds, with, um, our administrators. And we thank you, uh, Mr. Williams. I'm gonna share your compliments to the administrators with the group. I'm sure they'll be happy to hear that.
Dr. Chase, I'm sorry, I have, I have a couple of, of questions. Um, I, I might have. I think I, I, I didn't write the proper thing down. I missed it. Um, what is the total increase now? Like what is, what the budget?
Ms. Raymond, actually.
I'm sorry.
I put my, that's alright, I put my presentation to the side. Can you just?
Yep.
You can just bring it up on yours.
The total increase from budget to budget, uh, budget now to the, um. This draft one budget is an increase of two million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
You went super fast.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, two million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
But I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut in, but, uh, but half of that is going to the capital fund.
Correct, correct.
Alright.
Thank you. Um.
I think Ashley has.
Alright, um, also, Dr. Chase, just to clarify. So, um, I know one of the things I said is that we'd like to hear what from the administration. And when I mean that, I mean not only central, but also, um, within our school buildings. So I know you mentioned that they did keep, you know, the things that they felt that were necessary, that were needed. As all the things that you mentioned, social, emotional, um, programs that amp up our remote, um, learning as well. So they, do you, I know you're gonna go back, are you going back to, um, acts for? Any additional, I guess, adjustments or changes for them? Is that the reason why you're going back? Do you feel like we can, um, save in additional areas?
I think that if you present the budget as it is right now, um, you might have some challenges getting this to pass. Compared to what you asked for last year. So you're, you're gonna have to, um, you know, do your due diligence and at least make the effort. To try to bring this down as close as possible without hurting kids, without hurting programs. Signature programs that have been very, very helpful to children, our points of pride in this district. So, um, it's important that we, we just go back to the principals to see perhaps maybe how we could. Maybe perhaps partner with organizations. There are quite a few organizations that have come to us to, um, partner with us, um, to help in that regard. Uh, maybe perhaps look at grants. Um, I do know that grants will become available, especially for districts that serve the population that we serve. Um, there might be some creative things that we can do, um, that we did not consider. Now, in fairness to Ms. Raymond, uh, Ms. Raymond, um, pretty much picked up where Mary left off, right? Cause Mary developed this, Ms. Raymond put it together very, very pretty for us, and she made some adjustments as appropriate. So now this, the baton has been passed. And so she will definitely help principals in terms of, um, itemizing the importance of what it is that they'll, they'll, they'll need as well. So it's a process, you know, we'll go back. Um, but I'm going to tell you that, you know, I am committed. Um, as long as I'm the superintendent here to maintaining those programs and what give kids what they need. Our kids are hurting. Our kids have needs in this district. And, you know, to do bare bones would do a disservice to the population that we serve. And I would not be comfortable presenting a budget that I don't believe in. And I'm sure you guys agree with that as well. We're in the business of educating kids, so, um, we just have some work to do. And, um, thank you for allowing us to do this work. And I'm hoping that we can get some constructive feedback from you. And, you know, we don't have nine, ten iterations and we just clear with the community. And I'm also going to reach out to the community and ask that they to share their thoughts. Um, there are community members who have access to different organizations, who have access to different grant opportunities. And if they know of such, send us an email, let us know. Um, we're open to, uh, the community's support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Dr. Chase, I, I appreciate the feedback you gave. I think it's important for everyone to do their part, making sure that we are supporting the education of our children. And the staff that makes it all happen. Um, David, um, Ashley was before you, so Ashley and then David.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Chase, I guess from my perspective, uh, I'm in alignment with pretty much everything you said. Uh, obviously, our children are not doing, uh, as great as they could be if they were in the buildings and getting the support that they're used to, right? So it is a struggle. Uh, that said, there are a few places where, you know, some, some constructive criticism from my perspective. Uh, as an example, uh, the NISBA training, the NISBA, uh, conference, you know, I don't, I, I'll speak for myself personally. You know, if I can't go this year, whoop-de-doo, I don't mind taking that money out and reallocating it to the children, right? So examples like that, I think are where we can still trim a little bit of fat off the budget without impacting our children. So if you, as you guys go through, I know you guys will put your expertise in and, and see where there's other examples of stuff like that that we can further cut. Uh, because I think you're correct, uh, the budget as it stands, even though it's, it's a lean budget. Um, you know, our community is hurting financially, so yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Panetta. I was not gonna cut the board's training without hearing it from the board. So I appreciate you sharing that. Um, and Lisa and Raymond, we talked about that earlier, the, the expenses for the board, just so we know that now we could just itemize it and look at it. And we'll come back to you with whatever we cut to make sure that it's okay with the full board. Um, and that's perfectly.
Heard from one person.
That's why I said the full board. I try to make sure that I hear from the full board, and I know we said this tongue-in-cheek and as a joke. But it, it, it makes it difficult from, for us when we don't have a consensus from the full board. So it's important that we get a consensus from the full board so that we have a clear direction as to where we're going. We don't wanna insult any one person, or nor do we want to, um, upset anyone by a decision that we made. So I'm hoping that we all can come up with a singular decision to give us direction to move forward. That will be really helpful to administration.
I agree, that takes teamwork, makes the dream work. Thank you. Um, David?
Okay, so my gut tells me that we need to get below two percent. Uh, in terms of the levy increase in word, in order for the community as a whole to support it. There are hard economic times. Uh, so I, I've been loath to speak because I'm waiting for the eleventh. When, uh, when, uh, BBS comes back with their, their listing of what we need to do. And that's gonna include what we have to do to get our, you know, ha- i- i- ensure ventilation and have our kids, uh, you know, come back full force. Uh, if we put everybody back into the building. So I, I, I really don't wanna shoot myself in the foot there. Uh, but, uh, but two percent is what I'm thinking about. Yeah, if it can be done without destroying everything. Uh, and yes, I'm willing to forego going to NISBA if, i- i- if it helps the kids. Or we could just send one person and they can come back and turnkey a test, that kinda thing. Uh, but, but yes, that's, that's what's going through my mind at the, at the moment. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Um. Okay, does any, I think everyone shared. Tracy, you shared?
I didn't. You know, it's hard for me because, um, I'm similar to Ashley. I am the, one of the two board members that actually is a current consumer, um, with my kids in the district. So, you know, and I think I sent the email to the board. I'm a little torn on kinda how this year has been going. I have three different kids, they've been having three different experiences. Um. You know, my kids have been in multiple different programs here. We've been through all the buildings with the administration. Have several different teachers. Um, I want better evaluation of our programs and how effective some are and are not. Um, as far as funding certain things, um, and feedback, and I've been asking for that. So I guess we're just gonna get it at some point. Um, and then, and then I feel more comfortable with sharing, like, am I okay with, you know, taking down this line or putting up that line? I really don't know how things are going. I have a subjective view and have parent friends, I hear from people, sure. But I kinda want like good assessment of what's working, what's not. Um, you know. So, so it's, it's a little bit difficult for me in that area. Yes, I'm fine with letting go of training. Ivy knows, I've asked about, so can I go here, can I go that, there? And I, you know, have to pay out of pocket for certain things because we did take down our, um, board of ed line last year. To zero, so I, I'm fine with that again, if we need to do that. Um, but yeah, for me, when it comes to cert- funding certain things or where to move certain monies around. I'm more, I kinda need more information before just giving my, you know, I'm okay with this, okay with that. I definitely, I agree with you, David, I think two percent is definitely safe. I'm, I'm willing to go a little bit higher than, than just two percent, but that's, that's my feedback. Thanks.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, is there anyone else that has some sort of feedback, or we all?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
First of all, I'd just like to say that I don't think there's any of us. Who would want to see any programs that would benefit our students, uh, to be cut. But I too would like to see or get some feedback on what programs are working. And what programs may not be working very well. Um, I'd like to say that, um. Very few of us that I know of have gone to the, uh, the conference. Uh, for some years, and I have no problem with that being cut. Uh, you know, out altogether. But I do wanna make sure that whatever is cut, is cut because it is not functioning. And our, our students are not getting the best bang, uh, for its money being spent on their program. So. I'm very seriously, uh, you know, could concerned. That we make sure that we see what administration in each building would like to see. In their buildings, uh, to make sure that they're getting what they need. And that we make sure we look very seriously at the entire budget when we do get it, line by line, to see exactly. What can be cut. I'm hoping that we do not cut books and supplies for the children. And I do believe that there are some. Lines on the personnel lines that could be looked at very seriously. And I would like to make sure we do that before we take away anything. That is worthwhile for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Um, the only other thing, Dr. Chase, that I would add is I know, um. Um, as far as like, um, I'm not sure which, I can't remember which line this on. Um, but I believe we had cut last year heavily, um, the board retreat. Um, and even if we do something, let's say, virtual. Um, Ivy and I, we had looked at something like several months ago. And even virtual for like a half day was Ivy, was it eighteen? Like hundred, something like that, and then we looked again, and I think it went up.
I, I wanna say that it was between eighteen hundred and two thousand. I, I know that the number went up.
And that was just for a half day, or am I correct?
That was for the half day.
Yeah.
Even if it was in person or virtual.
Yep, in person or virtual. So if we can just keep in mind that, um. You know, as far as the, the board and, um, cutting back on training. I, I sort of don't agree with that, but I do like the idea of what David said is maybe one person goes. And they have to come back and report to it so that we get the information as well. Cause I think it's important for the board to do, um. Especially enable, that enable us to do our, um, duties better is getting trained. And also having a retreat to build consensus, respect, um, and teamwork. But thank you, Dr. Chase, and to your entire team for all the work on this budget. We appreciate it.
I, I just wanna remind the community once again that this segment of the meeting is gonna be extracted from this. Place on the website along with the, um, budget presentation so that people can see it on, at their leisure. Um, and we'll be inviting folk to submit their questions. We're gonna create the FAQ like we've done in the past so that people can see all the people's questions and the answers. In case others have similar questions and answers, and we can just kinda get a sense of where people thinking. The FAQ is also helpful to us in structuring what the presentation will look like. Because perhaps something we overlooked and that needs to be clarified further. And so, um, we'll, we'll be committed to doing that work as well. Okay? I'm done.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Chase. Alright. Alright, so that includes the budget discussion. So next up is first to go into, um, executive session. So, we are motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons being considered for board action. This evening and at the next meeting.
Next one.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We take, can we take five before we, uh, uh, go into the session?
Yes, eh, yes, that'll be five. Um, any extensions?
Can we take ten?
I, ten? Oh my god, um.
Alright, five, five, five is good, five is good.
Thank you, Terry. Um, hold on the paper, I, any opposed? Okay, we're going into executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright, five minutes, that puts us at eight thirty. I'll give you eight thirty-nine. Since I don't know when it turns eight. Ivy, do you want me to keep you company?
I just made you host, uh, Anton.
Very funny.
You have to remove me as co-host.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
Hi, Ivy.
Oh, Anton has it.
Alright, could you turn it over to me? Okay, let's.
Well, Ivy, before you, I guess I can text you too. I was gonna say, if you come, um. I, I can't get to shoveling the other side of my house, so if you ever have to deliver. So if you ever have to deliver a package or if anyone else, I don't know who else, you may assign to deliver something, to go around the front of the house.
Okay.
But he wanted that we'll be starting in two minutes, so it's been three. I'm sorry, just gonna get back to this. Okay, so we are now up to um, see board action, are there any questions about, um, number one, board committee membership? Any questions, um, about number two, co- community engagement and communications committee membership? Three.
I do have a question, excuse me. So I would like a separate vote on that.
Okay Ivy, we can pull that one to the side for a separate vote. All right, um, three, community engagement and communications website subcommittee?
I have a question about that.
Yes.
I don't recall seeing a recommendation about that.
It was Ivy, you correct me if I'm wrong, two or one? I mean, I feel like it was one or two meetings ago.
It was made in the fir- I can update you, it was made in the first meeting, those minutes have been submitted. Um, however, I couldn't get it on the agenda cuz you told me it wasn't within the five day. So we had to wait till this meeting to go on there. And that came from, just to update you, Mr. Williams, that came from conversations with the community about just different things on the website and where they are. So it's what the proposal for the subcommittee is, that people on the committee, you see Antonette is the board member. Samantha Ives is a community member and a parent and, um, PTA member. And, um, they would work together with anyone else who future, in the future wants to get on the committee to look at the website and just propose suggestions for ease of use for parents, for community members that look at the website, need to know where to find certain things, that's all it is. You, you know, they're, they're willing to dedicate the time to sit and go through our website. So, but because it's a subcommittee, we were told that it needs to get special, um, I guess additional approval.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Mayor. But, uh, Carol, isn't there a, a protocol or procedure for get, for establishing new committees and subcommittees? And, and the mere, uh, inclusion of it on, on the, uh, on the agenda, i- i- is that sufficient?
I would have to go back and look at your policy on committees.
Because I recall, I mean, we, we've established some committees before. And, uh, certainly, um, they're saying, I, I, I don't know, and excuse me for not knowing it, as, as cold as I should. But, uh, uh, I dare say, um, Ms. Mayor's explanation of what that was, uh, probably doesn't rise to that, uh, to that level. I, I don't recall even stark or instruct, or, or anything about this other than the fact that she couldn't get it on the meeting and the agenda in time last time. And now, uh, you know, just some, you know, uh, uh, kinda off the cuff, uh, comments about what this thing, what this committee's charged with.
Ivy.
I would recommend, I would recommend tabling this.
I'm sorry, it's not a committee, it's a subcommittee, so it's just.
Subcommittee, committee, same thing.
Ivy, can you, do you know the, um, policy by heart? I know we looked at it, I feel like.
Twenty-two-ten.
In regard to.
Yes, it's policy twenty-two-ten, um, under establishment of committees. Um, item number seven speaks to committees and or subcommittees or advisory in nature and have only such authority as specified by the Board of Education. Um, I believe in here, it also says, uh, number seven, the Board of Education will receive reports or recommendations from a committee and or subcommittee for consideration.
So.
The Board of Education however retains the right and has the duty to make all final decisions related to such reports or recommendations.
So that's.
And, uh, and it also says, number nine, a committee may not appoint a subcommittee of itself without the approval of the Board of Education.
Which is what we're doing.
Yep.
So Ivy, if I heard you correctly, uh, did you mention to, to, uh, I was listening, trying to listen to you. Did you say that, uh, we're supposed to get a report, um, from the co- from a committee when they wanna establish a subcommittee? Did I hear that correctly?
No, it just talks about, uh, any recommendations or reports, um, are subject to, um, final decisions by the Board of Education.
Okay, I, I'd like to have a separate, uh, vote on this one, a roll call vote on this one, too, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, number four, Employment Governance Committee. Number five, Donation Daniel and Helen Lewis.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry, on number four, can we have a roll call vote on that one, please?
Uh, how did that happen? Uh, is that the one where the, the, the money, that, that they found checks from two thousand and nine or something?
What?
I, I don't know if, I don't, I, I'm not, I don't really remember. I know, all I can remember is they, I think they found or the district found this, it's an old check and they just wanted, and it wasn't cashed or used, so they wanted to donate it to the school district.
I mean, they wrote a le- they wrote a letter and said that, uh,
Yeah.
that they, that, that they found two checks from, I think it's two thousand and nine, that weren't cashed by the district.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know.
They're donating them.
Yeah, strange, but I'm glad they're donating it, donating it back.
Yep, okay, um, the next one is Donation Exxon Mobile Corporation. All right, Budget Code Increases, number seven. Agreement Royal Coach Lines Incorporated. On, um, Mohegan Park Contractors, Inc. Okay, um, bid, um, on tech- tectonic engineering consultants, geologists and land surveyors, DPC.
I just wanna make one comment about both of these, uh, contractors. Uh, in the, um, in the, uh, contract, uh, there's a paragraph that says that they're to be supervised. Uh, you know, or they, or they may be supervised, I think they should be supervised. And I was just wondering, um, who does the supervision? And don't say that, uh, that, um, Mr. Falcone, because Mr. Fal- Falcone can't do both of them. So I'm just wondering if there's, does he, does he, um, you know, uh, have other people that he may want? Why, there's a word for it, I can't think of it, but anyway, uh, does he, um, maybe, um, here's a word, what is that word? Um, well, anyway, are there other people that he puts in charge when, uh, these people need supervise, supervision? He may not know it, but I'd like to find out from him, you know, how he goes about supervising these, uh, contractors that come in here.
Um, Dr. Chase?
I don't think she knows.
Sorry, answered that for me, so, um, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a definitive answer. Thank you.
Um, and Dr. Chase, one more, could you, um, so are they, could you give a little bit more information about the specifics that this company is doing?
Well, one, w- well, yeah, one of them is going to be, I think, tearing down the, um, uh, Mohegan Park Contractors. Uh, to bid for the, uh, outdoor, one is for the outdoor walk-in freezer.
Yeah, yeah.
Putting in, and I would like very much to know, you know, make sure that's put in the right way. And then the other one is, uh, uh, tectonic engineering consultant, geologist and land surveyors. And I think they're the ones we wanted to, um, do some professional surveying for us, uh, different, uh, different parts of our, uh, of, our, our campus. So, um, you know, I just wanna know, I mean, this, this is not in a little bit of money, we got fifty-five thousand dollars for one. And, um, fifty-three thousand for another. And I just wanna know, you know, who's supervising these people to make things, make sure things are going, uh, you know, going in, uh, the right way, that's all.
Um, I asked that, Dr. Chase, because I, I see, the contract is like our, um, what do you call it? Um, for lack of a better, like a standard or boilerplate contract? So I, I couldn't really clearly get it, uh, and, and an idea of what the specific work was being done. I didn't, I just didn't wanna guess what it was, I'm sorry.
Sure, Ms. Raymond, Ms. Ms. Raymond, are you, um, still with us?
Some people gotta go.
So what I will do is I will get clarification for you and I will send that to the board so that I'm not taking a guess.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Chase. Thank you, Dr. Chase.